...of September have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. I am content that I sign these as a correct record of those meetings. Maureen, have we any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chairman. An apology was received from councillor Denise Legault and councillor Patricia Ellis is attending as a substitute member.
Thank you. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-buccoonry or disclosed with buccoonry interests to declare? Have there been any questions received from the public?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. I now get on to item five, which is the Waverley Borough Local Plan Emerging Spatial Strategy. I'd like to invite Paul Wenham to introduce his report.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'd like to say a few words of background to this item. I'm sure it's not new to members, but it is important in context terms. Remember that Waverley has a legal duty to follow central government guidance when it produces its local plan. What's absolutely clear is there have been significant changes in the guidance since work on the original core strategy started, with the coalition introduced significant changes with the introduction of the National Planning Policy Framework. In addition, Waverley received feedback from the Planning Inspector in 2013, which has further shaped the council's approach going forward. So what was the inspector's advice back in 2013? He said that we should update the strategic housing market assessment, noting that like all councils, Waverley must take a positive approach to deliver housing need. And we must also remember that there was a sea change, moving from the South East Plan, where we were dealing with numbers of around 250 homes per year, to the latest Schlar figures of 519. Huge change in the numbers involved. The inspector said also that any under-delivery has to be justified in accordance with the National Planning Policy Framework. He also said that the council was required to undertake a green belt review. So taking the government changes and the inspector's advice into account, the councils and its offices have been working hard to lay the foundations for a successful local plan, and the list of some of the technical reports are certainly included in the annex. So one of the questions we all have to ask is why all this detailed work? Clearly, the plan has to meet the requirements of the NPPF, which demands that all the policies have to be evidence-based. The evidence will be used to test all of those constraints which are of concern to councillors and the public, so that includes landscape, for example, road networks, and more generally, infrastructure. Detailed work is also involved to ensure that we clearly identify all the infrastructure needs required to support housing delivery. Also, the aim is to make the plan challenge-proof, from the government, from the inspector, yes, but also especially from developers. Do we have any choice but to do a thorough job? The answer is undoubtedly no. The government's position is definitely hardened, encouraging or even mandating the delivery of house building. So what else is the government done or is it doing? Couple of examples: it's reduced the control on offices and bond developments, so that the change is too residential, almost immediately and automatic. It plans to give brownfield sites automatic planning permission. And added sting in the tail, it says if planning authorities don't deliver the growth agenda, they will have their powers removed. And if planning authorities haven't produced a local plan by 2017, they will take over responsibility for producing it. What is clear is that local planning authorities and the councillors have the unenviable task of developing local plans to achieve growth whilst at the same time looking to ensure the growth is appropriate to the borough. It's also clear that councils must engage with the process and gather evidence robustly to defend the final numbers on house building over the planned period. In summary, in order to address the government's agenda to build, 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 councils must provide, I'm sorry to say, evidence, evidence, evidence. And in providing the evidence, the council has employed relevant specialists, it's drawn on the advice of a critical friend, members have seen presentations from a former chief planning inspector to demonstrate we're following best practice. Finally, Chairman, before inviting comments from members to pass to the executive, I'd ask Graham Parrott to give a short presentation about housing numbers. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, I don't want to repeat what's in the committee papers that you have, so I've just pulled out a few slides to highlight some of the key issues, really. I think the first thing is just to say, what have we been doing to date? What are the sort of headline bits of work? And clearly, we've been building the evidence base, an ongoing discussion dialogue with infrastructure providers. We've consulted already on housing scenarios, which was the consultation that took place last year, and received a number of responses over 4,000, and we've fed those back and considered those, taking the work forward. And there is obviously the ongoing work in relation to sustainability appraisal. I think the table here on this slide was really intended perhaps just to sort of highlight the challenge, if you like, because if you were to go back a few years to perhaps a situation when we had South East Plans and Structure Plans and so on, for those members who've been familiar with planning for some time, you'll know that, you know, that often we've looked at the urban capacity, what can our settlements deliver us in terms of housing? And quite often, that enabled us to meet the sort of housing requirements we have without needing to consider anything else. Our best estimate at the moment is we're looking at the potential maybe to deliver about 3,800 of the homes that would be required through those sorts of sources. That's where we've granted planning permission already, but also sites within the urban areas that we think could come forward, and also making some allowance for windfall sites to come forward. So you can see the size of the issue. If the council was to meet its housing needs in full, then, I've used the word shortfall, that's the sort of number we're talking about, around 6,000. And I think it's fair to say that, again, if the council is to meet its needs in full, there are fairly limited options, really. You, you know, we have to look to see whether there are other brownfield sites that could deliver housing. I mean, there are other brownfield sites other than Dunsfold airfield, but clearly that's the most significant brownfield site that we have that's not within any of our settlements. If we can't utilise that site and was to meet our needs, then we have to look at more housing on the edges of settlements using greenfield land. And clearly, because of the constraints, unless the council were minded to release more land from the green belt, or places like the area about Standing Natural Beauty, which is another quite significant constraint across the borough, then it means that the main focus for delivering housing through that second option, if you like, would fall on places like Cranley and Farnham, and to a lesser extent, Cranley. And just briefly, in terms of where we are at the moment, I think as Matthew Evans has already said, we are still completing the work, we have the transport work that's ongoing. The next step from here on would be to start developing a preferred strategy and start working up the plan based around a preferred strategy. There would have to be further testing with infrastructure providers, we'd have to complete what's called an infrastructure delivery plan, which actually sets out the detail of what's required, obviously writing the plan itself and doing all the necessary appraisals for sustainability and habitat regulations purposes, leading to effectively a preparation of a draft plan which would be brought back before members through the committee cycles for publication. And so this is a step along that way, but that would be the next key milestone with a view to submitting it in the summer. I think, Chairman, that's really all I have to say at this stage, and I'm happy obviously to answer any questions.
Right, thank you, Mr Parrott. We have various councillors who are not members of this committee who have requested to speak, and I list them: councillor Andy McLeod, councillor Andrew Bolton, councillor Richard Seaborn, councillor John Williamson, and councillor John Gray. And the comments from councillor Mike Band are in front of you to read. So I will ask each of you in turn to speak, you may speak for four minutes. And please, because of the time restrictions we have this evening, please do not repeat what a previous speaker has already said. If I may ask, may I ask councillor Andy McLeod, if you may speak.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the members of the committee for the opportunity to address you at this meeting. First of all, I'd like to say I do certainly recognise the difficulties that the council has, the executives, the portfolio holder, and the officers in producing this spatial strategy, for the reasons set out by Paul Wenham, so I don't need to really repeat them. But I do think that the members of the public, when they come to look at this strategy, will be a bit disappointed and confused by it. Why do I say they'll be disappointed? Well, it's not actually remotely what they actually voted for, at least the members of the public who actually voted. They actually voted for the large option at Dunsfold, and I think it's probably fair to say, if the option for 5,000 had been available at Dunsfold, they'd probably have voted for that. Why do I say it's confusing? Well, it doesn't actually seem to relate to any of the scenarios that were specified in the consultation a year ago. In these scenarios, there was a breakdown of where the houses were due to go, and that's not specified this time. The nearest scenario to what's being proposed here was scenario one, actually, but the actual housing number has been increased from 8,450 to 9,861, and that isn't actually explained or justified why the numbers have been increased. One of the reasons, actually, I noticed myself, is that the housing, the number of years it covers has been increased from eighteen years to nineteen years. It finishes not now in 2031, but in 2032, and that explains 519 because of the extra year, and the other 900 are explained by the number going up from 470 a year to 519. But what's more important than that is that the consequences of this plan are not really properly explained. And if this plan is actually introduced, we're talking about building in Waverley, the equivalent of a town rather larger, probably 10% larger than Godoming. It's gone up from previous plan, it was a little bit lower than Godoming. We're talking about 24,000 people being added to the population, something like 15,000 cars, and 5,000 school-aged children. And it just seems to me that that is an absurd thing to be suggesting as possible in the time available. The shortfall that was mentioned, actually, I'm slightly confused about the shortfall because it starts at 6,000, but ultimately it finishes up at 3,000. I'm not quite sure why this shortfall exists, actually, because there was no shortfall mentioned in the original plan of 8,450. Now we've gone up to 9,800 or whatever, we've suddenly got a 3,000 shortfall. That's partly explained by the increase of 1,400, but where does the extra 1,600 come from? The important point about that, though, isn't that there is a shortfall, that this shortfall seems to result in us having to concentrate the plan into a ten-year timescale from 2017. So we're already starting with a four-year backlog, in fact, the plan starts from 2013, and we're not going to be building at the rate of 519 in the first few years. So we're going to have to very much concentrate the plan into the ten years that we're talking about, and that will come to 700 a year, which is something like three times the normal building rate in Waverley, which is about 230 a year. So what I would say overall is that this is not a realistic plan, and running out of time, so I'll have to draw my comments to conclusion. But a more realistic plan is actually to work with the Dunsfold people, the people who want to work to develop Dunsfold, because they're a proper developer that could produce a garden village at Dunsfold. I could say a lot more, but I've run out of time.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to cut to the end, we have a lot of other questions.
Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Andrew Bolton, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I believe the plan has a basis of being quite realistic. I compliment the preparers of the emerging spatial strategy. My understanding, however, is based on table one of the report and not of the figures that were just presented to us. There are a total of 9,861 dwellings which we need in the next nineteen years, and we have broadly speaking, existing commitments of 3,200. There are possible additional sites in and around existing settlements of 3,600, and this explains the shortfall of about 3,000. The most suitable greenfield locations for sustainable development are stated to be around Farnham and Cranley. Small villages are not appropriate. However, the 3,600 additional sites already draw heavily on Farnham and Cranley, and I would suggest that further development of the 3,000 to make up the shortfall would be overwhelming for both greenfield release and for traffic planning. I conclude, we must regard Dunsfold as the candidate for the shortfall of just over 3,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bolton. Councillor Richard Seaborn, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to refer members to the concluding paragraph in the section on consultation of housing scenarios on page 10 of the strategy. It states, "It was clear from that consultation that there was strong support for the use of Dunsfold aerodrome to provide some of the housing requirements to meet the identified needs. In overviewing and scrutinising the strategy, I'd like to know if the members of your committee intend calling into question a conclusion that's simply not supported by the results of the consultation. It is correct that the council carried out best endeavours to consult, and residents were given every opportunity to express their preferences. However, the fact that only 4,265 responses were received means that there is no mandate to state that the consultation indicated strong support for any of the options. 4,265 responses constitutes feedback from around one in twenty of the electors in the borough, or one in twelve households. It would be an equally valid conclusion to state that eleven out of twelve households did not like any of the options and abstained from an exercise which was, after all, a consultation, not a vote. It's right that the consultation is discussed in the strategy, and the first four paragraphs are factually correct. I would, however, hope that this committee will require the authors of the strategy to include reference to the disappointingly low level of participation in the consultation, and request that the conclusion about strong support for the use of the Dunsfold aerodrome site be qualified to make it clear that the strong support comes from only the small minority of residents that chose to respond." Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Seaborn. Now I have councillor John Williamson.
Thank you, Chairman. First, let me add my support to councillor McLeod's comments and perhaps pose the question that comes from his analysis, and that's, how does this spatial strategy differ from scenario one that went out to public consultation and received the least level of support from Waverley's residents? However, I'd like to focus on a few other points which should constrain tonight's scrutiny process. In developing the new local plan, and in taking into account the inspector's comments, I understand that a detailed transport assessment is being undertaken by Mark McDonald, and that Natural England have commissioned a report to validate the habitat regulations The traffic study does not model the current proposal for Farnham, since it utilises Surrey County Council's traffic model, which does not include the Chris Nicholson proposal for the centre of Farnham. And secondly, the Natural England study has slipped through to January next year, and there is little confidence that we will have it, particularly since we've been waiting for this evidence since 2007. Both these issues were raised way back in 2006, not just 2013, by the inspector, and conversely, we're once again being asked to agree a spatial strategy which determines the location and amount of new housing before being shown the evidence which constrains it. We can't go forward with a strategy that evaluates the constraints afterwards, rather than, as the process dictates, using the evidence to inform that strategy. Otherwise, Waverley will quite rightly be accused of making the evidence fit the plan, which will result in there being a good chance that the inspector will reject this plan, as he did on the previous two occasions. This is quite simply a matter of process, we're not following process. If it was allowed to happen, then you'd really see the developers running muck amongst Waverley. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. Councillor John Gray.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think everyone around this table who have read the report understands the significance of the inclusion of Dunsfold Park, but I think we have to be careful about the practicalities of Dunsfold Park, not just in terms of the infrastructure, but also in terms of the timing and its impact. For the next five years, we have to provide on the numbers that are given to us, 2,595 houses, then an additional 2,595 to get the ten-year supply, leading to the questioned nineteen-year supply of 9,861. When will Dunsfold Park practically, if it's included in the plan, be able to come on stream and add to those numbers? I think there's a lot of questions around that, in terms of how long it will take to build an infrastructure, if an infrastructure can be built, and realistically, the council needs to look and justify a ten, a shorter period, a ten-year period, and to do a lot more work to look to make Dunsfold Park a feasible solution, if that's what the council comes to that conclusion on. I'm very concerned that you're relying on something in terms of Dunsfold Park that may be totally impractical, and then not being able to be delivered to support the numbers you're putting forward in the plan. I think that you need more detail to define the spatial strategy. We really need to understand the significance of putting a new town, a large village, in the corner of Waverley, and it is in the corner of Waverley, it is in an area of significant beauty, space. It was a brownfield site only because of its position as an airfield during the war. It is a facility there which provides employment currently, and yes, housing has to be considered. But we do need to understand the detail of it, what's practical in terms of that site. We're not just playing with numbers here, we're playing with the impacting on those people in Waverley who we have a responsibility for. The effect of a Dunsfold aerodrome would be very significant for something like 40% of Waverley, and we need to make sure that we have all the facts before we go forward and put that in. If anything, we should put Dunsfold Park towards the back end of the plan and spend the time to make sure that if it's going to be included, it's practical and we can mitigate all the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, John Gray. That concludes the questions from non-members of this committee. I now open the floor to members of this committee. Councillor Grant.
Thank you, Chairman. At the risk of displaying my ignorance, I'd like to ask a question. I fully understand why we are required to produce evidence, otherwise we'd get taken over or have our powers removed. Has evidence been provided of the alleged need for houses? Given the government's professed wish to rebalance the economy, shift a lot of emphasis to the powerhouse of the North, will we always be out of control of our population, see inexorable growth, or should we question these numbers?
I think I'm not sure we can answer that question, but I'll ask Matthew Evans to respond.
Chairman, if I may, just to explain the context of what the government expects us to do, and it's also worth reminding ourselves of the very clear direction from the local planning inspector back in 2013. What we're required to do, and we didn't do it in 2013, which is why we're back here where we are, is you have to identify your full objectively assessed need. Now, the way to do that is informed by government guidance, and we have a figure of 519. That figure is what it is, and I would certainly recommend to members that they don't seek to challenge that number, because that is a technical objectively assessed figure of need. The key bit of work, and this is where the focus of the evidence base has taken place, is then to test that figure. And again, we have to follow the lead from the local planning inspector and also from the NPPF, and what we're required to do is test the delivery of that figure against the policies set out in the National Planning Policy Framework. And what's clear from the evidence of other local authorities and from the NPPF itself is that the focus should be on testing that against things like infrastructure, against landscape designations, against, particularly against transport, a whole raft of matters. And that's why there's been so much focus by the team over the last year to eighteen months on doing that testing, and we have to do that. That's not negotiable, that's not a voluntary process, we have to do that, and then that will inform the final, final version of the local plan. But just to recap the key points, I think it's a really important point, the objectively assessed need is what it is. It is 519 dwellings a year, and our focus is to test that through the planning process. I hope that helps, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Murray, did you wish to ask?
Thank you, Chairman. We should not adopt a spatial strategy without first considering the constraints that bind it, and as I, before I go on, I just want to remind us that Paul said in his introduction just now, evidence, evidence, evidence is what we need. So in 2006, the inspector intervened to halt Waverley's first attempt at a core strategy for precisely that reason. His supplementary question on appropriate assessment and mitigation, which Waverley could not answer, was, "How can I be certain that the mitigation measures will be effective?" The inspector also criticised the council for deciding the location and amount of housing before assessing the constraints, stating, and I quote, "This is but one example of what it is described as the high-level strategic approach taken in this strategy, which I find to be so generalised and lacking in a true spatial dimension as to run the risk of being found to be fundamentally unsound." So we have to ask, why does the council appear to be intent upon repeating the same mistakes of the past and failing for the third time? Are we going to make the evidence fit the spatial strategy, or are we going to change the strategy? Because it seems to me we've been putting, like so many people have said before me, I'm sure, the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Matthew Evans.
Just very briefly, Chairman, I think 2006 was a long time ago, and the whole basis of undertaking planning has changed significantly since then, not least that the South East Plan has by and large been removed. But I think, to give the member confidence, we are doing exactly what the government requires us to do, which is to identify your need and then test it thoroughly against all reasonable alternatives. So we're not cutting corners, and that's one of the reasons why it is taking the time it is. We are absolutely following up-to-date current guidance, we're taking advice from the chief planning inspector, we've taken advice from the planning inspectorate, and we've taken the advice from our critical friends. So I think it's worth to remind ourselves what's happened in the past, but if I could give members assurance, we are absolutely doing what the NPPF is requiring us to do. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Matthew. Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll try not to repeat, but inevitably there's going to be some repetition. I actually do remain a bit concerned about the soundness of this strategy at the moment. Unlike many people in this chamber, I actually sat through the curtailed examination last time, and the last thing I want is to see another plan rejected. Despite some robust arguments, those of you that saw the whatever last time, from Rushmore Borough Council, the inspector didn't fail Waverley on its duty to cooperate. However, I'm worried at the moment, because both Waverley and Rushmore have a stated agreement to avoid the coalescence of settlements, and yet Waverley is persisting in supporting two sites in the current Schlar, which physically attach Farnham to Aldershot, and I can't see Rushmore supporting this approach, and feel that these sites should be reassessed and conversations had with the neighbouring borough about their suitability, because I'm assured we will be tested once again on our duty to cooperate. Before the last hearing, the inspector sent a note with eight topics, I'm not going back as far as 2006, just 2013. In the end, he suspended the hearing, having only heard about two or three: the duty to cooperate, meeting housing needs, and... cooperate, meeting housing needs, and, up to a point, the location of housing. And as Matthew has said, he didn't query Waverley's housing numbers, he queried the evidence for those numbers. The previous portfolio, whether he didn't quite understand, I don't know, but he didn't seem to get the link between the two, and it was very disappointing to hear some of what was said at the end of it. It was the lack of evidence that was the reason that the inspector curtailed the examination as he did. He also queried whether there was sufficient detail provided to justify the specific figures for certain settlements, and this is something I'm not sure we are doing at the moment. I think, as other people have said, there's an element of plucking figures out without actually justifying them. Matters which were on the list but not examined included transport and infrastructure, he never got round to it, and he specifically highlighted the effects on transport linkages in and around Farnham. Farnham is the only settlement in the borough with more than one air quality management area and evidence of pollution well above the levels acceptable under EU law. The only reason for that pollution is stationary traffic. It's aggravated in part by the level crossing, which causes tailback, as many of you will know if you've been to Farnham, but it's mainly by the town's narrow roads and ever-increasing traffic, which we are increasing with every planning permission we give for a house in Farnham. Where is the logic in putting thousands more cars on roads which are already unable to cope with the existing load? Farnham's quite prepared to play its part and take some new houses, but the borough does have a duty of care to its residents, particularly its vulnerable residents, you can never say that word, and the two groups most affected by air pollution, as we know, are the very young and the very old. Can the borough justify its decision to concentrate housing in the only part of the borough with severe air quality management issues? The inspector queried the lack of housing on Dunstford Park, and I'm delighted there's been some movement on this, although, as I think I've said before, I think the number allocated of 1,800 is the worst of all possible worlds. I think in order to minimise the effect on local roads, it would have to be a settlement large enough to provide and sustain its own facilities. Small village, its own school, local shops, medical facilities could reduce the need to travel elsewhere for these facilities. A young mum could, as I remember doing, walk the children to school and pick up daily needs in the local shop without having to resort to the car. But it takes imagination to think of something quite that size. In the introduction to the proposed development on Dunstford Park, the applicants spell out certain advantages, which are not necessarily evident on other sites, especially around Farnham. The site doesn't flood, and the site requires no mitigation for harm to the special protection areas in the borough. At the time of the previous examination, it was only really the Thames Basin Heath Spa which was under close scrutiny, but now, as we know, the Weldon Heath Spa has also got to be considered very seriously indeed. And using this heading, the inspector raised Waverley's approach to landscape designations, character designations. And I don't think we've changed our attitude to those things at all, and we are still putting local and nationally designated areas and national designations ahead of international and UK law. And I don't think this is sound. We are saying we cannot touch the green belt, we cannot touch the AONB, but we can shove a load of housing which is going to have a harmful effect on the special protection areas. And I am not sure that's a sound approach, I'm really not. It's quite clear in the policy which is designed to deliver the habitats law that priorities should be given to directing development away from the areas where potential adverse effects can be avoided without the need for mitigation measures. They're not my words, these are words from the policy. Only when this is not possible, a mitigation has to be found should local planning authorities work together to deliver a consistent approach. Which brings me to another thing that I'm a little bit worried about, and that is the recent change to the amount of SANGs capacity in Farnham Park. Waverley was ahead of the game at one point on SANGs. We had Farnham Park, and we put in an avoidance strategy using Farnham Park for developers to buy into to mitigate the harm to the Thames Basin Heaths. But we have changed this, and we're now working on a lower figure of 1.97. Every neighbouring borough uses an average occupancy figure of 2.4. Developers have expressed surprise, really, that we've changed it to 1.97, and the borough has justified this. I remember Graham coming along to Western Area to explain it to us, that this is because the East Street development contains a lot of small units, and this has brought the current average down to 1.97. What worries me about this approach is that the average could easily rise again. If we don't build a lot of one-bedroom houses, we build a lot of three- and four-bedroom houses, then the average occupancy goes up and therefore the capacity plummets. And I don't think this is a sound approach, and I don't think an inspector would find it sound. Waverley and developers are anxiously negotiating the provision of future SANGs, but there's not a great deal of evidence, in fact, none at the moment, that they're going to become available during the life of this strategy, at least I haven't seen any. So will a large number of houses without identified SANGs actually pass muster? Should we be putting vast numbers of housing in an area which needs mitigation if we haven't got it? The previous inspector, those of you who read the notes, will see that he asked that very question. I'm nearly finished, you'll be glad to know. This is my passion now. Waverley is a beautiful borough, and it's got distinctive and attractive settlements of all sizes. And the character of each of them has developed steadily as these settlements have developed, and the gradual transition from the open countryside into the more developed areas has, on the whole, been retained around our settlements. The current position, if we don't put some block on this greenfield development, would result in inappropriate developments bolted on to all our precious settlements. These developments would offer no benefit, or little benefit, to the residents affected, and yet would destroy the natural beautiful landscape that makes the settlement so special. The two settlements, as we all know, you've heard it several times today, it's not up there, the two settlements under great threat are Cranly and Farnham. The report states quite clearly that the choice, if we really, if push comes to shove, is between continuing to release greenfield sites on the edge of these settlements, or to look at a larger development on the largest brownfield settlement in the borough, namely Dunstford Park. You can read the MPPF in many, many ways. There are paragraphs to be found that will back up any argument you want to make, but there is no site in the borough which ticks as many boxes as Dunstford Park. We've got to get this examination correct, and presenting a similar form of strategy to the last one, I think is a dangerous ploy personally. I don't know that we've answered the doubts of the previous inspector. He told us clearly what we had to do to make the strategy sound, and I am not sure that we are going on the right lines yet to make that certain. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Coburn. We will be dealing with the air quality control in Farnham later on in this agenda, but may I ask both Matthew Evans and Graham Parrott to respond, particularly in regards to SANG. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, and I'll be very brief. I think what Councilor Coburn has just presented to us highlights absolutely how difficult these decisions are, and the pros and cons of different strategies. I'll talk a little bit about the Thames Basin Heath Special Protection Area, and Councilor Coburn's quite right to highlight that we have two. We have the Weldon Heaths as well in Waverley, and that does present particular challenges to us. In terms of the process, the plan itself will have to be accompanied by a habitats regulation assessment. That will tease out all the issues relating to the impact on the SPA. And clearly, that will have to be informed by the South East Plan, which is still in place in terms of the SPA, and gives a clear policy steer. Worth highlighting, we're not alone on this, it's not a Waverley-specific issue, I think there are nine or 10 other local authorities who've had to grapple with this issue through their local plan. And certainly SANG, SANG is a fundamental part of the strategy for assessing any impact or addressing any impact on the SPA. And when it comes to the local plan examination, we'll have to show an inspector that we either have the SANG in place to support housing, or that during the period of the plan, that SANG will come on-stream. And that's another key element of work which we're working on. Thank you, Chairman.
Do you want to add to that, Graham, or not?
I think the only thing I would just add to what Matthew Evans has said is that throughout this process, we've also been working step by step with Natural England as the national body with the responsibility. So whenever we've been looking at developing strategies, and bear in mind that Natural England have also been involved in local plan examinations in a lot of the other authorities which are affected by the SPA, so inspectors and others have grappled with this issue elsewhere as well. So it's a well-tried and tested position. But what we're keen to do all the way here is to make sure that Natural England are on board with what we're doing. As Matthew rightly says, at the end of the process, there'll need to be a proper assessment of the draft plan, but we want to keep going along that route with Natural England's support.
Thank you. Next question is to Councilor Jim Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I ask my questions, I think there were a number of questions from people that asked to give questions from outside the committee. Have we answered those questions, or do they feel that we've answered their questions?
The members who are not members of this committee, their comments will be noted by Maureen, and at the end of this committee, those comments will be forwarded to the executive.
Okay, thank you. Right, okay, then, moving on. When will we have the detailed transport assessment, which is being carried out at the present time? Number two is, we've put down 2017 completion. We have to have it by then, otherwise the government, I understand, are going to take the reins here and impose something on us. So how many other district and borough councils are still without a local plan? And I can see a big queue coming here, and everybody's going to rush up, you know, the end of 2016 and say, 'we want our plan in', and of course, all the inspectors were busy. Do we aim to get it in ahead of the queue or what? Because history has shown that we're not brilliant at giving timelines, as this committee well knows. Now, with regard to the infrastructure delivery plan that's up on the screen at the present time... Are you all right? Yeah, okay. With regard to the infrastructure delivery plan that's up on the screen at the present time, you mentioned the England Highways and A3 consultation. Now, what about all the other consultations necessary for infrastructure, like schools, sewage, water, the whole thing? Is that part of the plan as well? And how long is that going to take? Thank you.
Chairman, if I start and deal with the issue of 2017, I think it's worth highlighting that if the Housing and Planning Bill comes into place, that will give the government the option of taking over plan-making in local authorities if it hasn't been completed or even very highly progressed by 2017. I think one of the challenges, we don't exactly know what the criteria will be. I think the reality is, there are an awful lot of local authorities who are in the same position as us, so I'd be very surprised if the government decide unilaterally to take over the planning policy function of very many local authorities across the South East. Having said that, clearly we need to make progress for a range of other reasons, and I think primarily, and most importantly, to support the appropriate management of new development in Waverley. You asked the question, how many local authorities have got very up-to-date local plans? Well, I think if you ask me the question about our colleagues in Surrey, I don't think there is one Surrey district who has got a local plan in place which reflects the most up-to-date strategic housing market assessments. So they're all vulnerable to an extent. Now, some of them have managed to get plans through in the last two or three years, Surrey Heath, Righgate and Banstead come to mind. But as I say, I don't think I could identify another Surrey district which has now got a plan which is fully compliant with the MPPF and housing market assessments at this time. And I'll pass over to Graham to deal with the more difficult question of transport.
I mean, I think in relation to the transport, obviously what we're looking at at the moment, you'll see from the next steps slide, is, well, obviously, we've still got a timetable, we're trying to work up our plan for publication in April, and there's a lot of work to be done before we get to that stage. So we're very keen, I mean, the transport work is at a very advanced stage, we're keen to get it finished off as quickly as possible. There are elements of that work which frankly lie a bit out of our control, and I'll give you a couple of examples. We clearly want to make sure that every step of the way that we've got the county council as the highway authority for the area are obviously on board, and I think it's fair to say that the work we're doing is also running in parallel with work that's being done, and I'm talking about the A281 in particular here. You'll be aware that the owners of the airport themselves are also readying themselves to make a planning application. Now, the significance of that is simply that they are also liaising with us, but particularly the county council, on some of their work, and we need to try and make sure that on some of those core assumptions and some of the base data, that they are consistent with one another, and in particular, to make sure that the county council are happy with what we're doing. So for example, as the Dunstford application work is developing, some of the ideas around mitigation may be changing. We want to make sure that we have an up-to-date position on what is potentially available as mitigation before we finally draw a line under this work. So we are as keen to get it finished as everybody else, and it's well advanced, but I can't give a precise date at the moment, other than the fact we want to try and make sure it doesn't compromise the target of getting to where we want to by next April. In terms of the other areas of infrastructure, to some extent, it's a bit of a chicken and an egg, because we've had lots of discussions with infrastructure providers, like the utility companies and so on, but often they say to us, 'well, until you've settled on some kind of a preferred strategy, where you can really start telling us where things might be going to happen, only then can we engage and really give you the full information'. So we have enough information at the moment, I think, to indicate to us whether there are any really major issues there, but until we've got something more definitive that we can give them, we can't finish that off. But again, we've worked very carefully to timetable that, so that we can aim to hit that timetable, and that will mean a lot of work going into the new year in terms of trying to pull together the responses we've had from these infrastructure providers. But it does cover education, it covers all those wide range of other things, other than just transport.
Councilor, if you wish to come back, but I would ask you to be brief, please.
Very briefly, I'd just like to... Matthew may well be surprised if the government do it, but they could well do that. And what I'd like to see Paul Wenham and the team do is to ensure that we get on with this, because it's dragged on and dragged on, and I don't care if the officers have to work seven days a week, let's get this done, for Christ's sake, it's going on and on and on, and it's time to call a halt and get down to the brass tacks of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Fojczewski.
Thank you, Chairman, and well done, Jim, that was a great statement. I'm not sure how practical it is in coming forward, but I think we all get behind you and support it. It's an ever-moving process, this, and things are changing constantly, and keeping up with it must be hard work for the officers, but we do need a plan. And it's frustrating to be sat here after all this time with a report in front of us that, in my opinion, I'm slightly disappointed that it is not as sound as I would like it to be, it's not as robust as I would like it to be. And again, it comes back to that whole question of evidence, you know, that evidence has to be strong, it really, really does. We talk about consultation, we went through a process of consulting with our residents 12 months ago, and it was very clear the message that came back, and that was 80% of people would like to see something done at Dunstford Park, like it or loathe it. That's what the public were saying, and the ratios, given of 1 in 12, 1 in 20, that's not bad odds. When we look at some of the applications that we've already granted planning permission to, some of the consultations that have come back don't even register in terms of what percentage of the population have actually commented, but large-scale applications have gone through on very limited consultation. We talk about the impact on Dunstford Park, but what about the impact on Cranly, and what about the impact on Farnham? These are the areas that are going to be most affected, because we're not privileged and we don't have the same protection as the rest of the borough. We talk about an objectively assessed housing need for the borough, but that's disproportionate to Cranly and Farnham. Not everybody wants to live in Farnham, and not everybody wants to live in Cranly, but yet we're looking, we've already, in Cranly alone, are looking at applications that mount up to 1,200 houses. I mean, that's a colossal amount of houses. The one area that I'm very confused over, and again, it comes back to the transport issue and the traffic problems, is in the conclusion, it states there's uncertainty that relates to the Dunstford Park transport assessment. With 1,200 houses proposed for Cranly, are we not worried about the transport issues there? Are we not worried about the cumulative effect across the borough? Are we not worried about one movement every nine minutes for the next five years on Noel Lane? And when we start adding these things up together, we can't really criticise a transport plan for Dunstford Park, because is it all right for us to have it? Is it not all right for Dunstford to have it? I mean, there has got to be some equal proportion here as to how we treat our transport movements with fairness. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor... Oh, sorry, Matthew, do you want to respond to that?
Chairman, just really briefly on the transport issue, and I think the point's well made. However, the reality is that the scenarios identify the most potential for change around Dunstford and Dunstford Aerodrome and Farnham. So that has been where the focus of our much more fine-grained and detailed transport assessment has been undertaken in the last months. But we shouldn't forget the fact that the- But we shouldn't forget the fact that the county council have done a lot of work in the background, and they did produce a strategic highway assessment, transport assessment some time ago, which picks up all these issues. So you're absolutely right, Cranly hasn't been forgotten, neither have Godlmer or Hazemere. But the council made a conscious decision to focus more detailed analysis on Farnham and Dunsfold for the very reason I has explained, because that's where most change is possible under the scenarios.
Thank you, Councillors.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to do a bit of nitpicking, only a couple of questions here. The benefits of accepting the Green Belt review findings are, that it, and the second point is that it should be seen as a positive endorsement of the role that most of Waverley's Green Belt plays. I don't understand that, and if you could tell me what the positive endorsement will be demonstrated by a Green Belt review, I would be grateful for that. The other thing is, an issue for consideration, is that when consulted last year, 52% of those who responded were opposed to the potential changes to the Green Belt, and only 30% were in support. I'm wondering what weight was given to those figures? How then did we interpret that? And just one other question, if I may, Chairman. The acceptance of the findings of the Green Belt review is subject to discussions with the relevant towns and parishes about the fit with emerging neighbourhood plans. How are those discussions arranged? I may as well mention Elsted, as everybody else is mentioning their patches, but I'm not aware that my parish council is particularly happy with the discussions, a lack of. So can you tell me what the programme is there? How are you actively engaging parish councils in this review? Thank you.
Chairman, if I can pick up on those points, starting with the Green Belt and the issue of a Green Belt review being seen as a positive endorsement of the role that most of Waverley's Green Belt plays, I think what we meant by that is that clearly the Green Belt or the latest Green Belt boundaries were established in Waverley in what, about 1980? 1980, so a long time ago now. And I think it's a useful exercise to revisit the Green Belt, revisit the boundaries, revisit the washover of the villages, and test them against the most up-to-date national planning guidance. And where I think this has been a very helpful study, it's reinforced that now, 35 years on, Green Belt still performs that important purpose. And I think that's a really powerful message in terms of defending the Green Belt, both through the local plan, but also in terms of planning applications. Councillor Ellis asked about the weight to be given to the consultation responses. Well, it is what it is. I think clearly the consultation was a very thorough consultation, it was the biggest consultation this council's done on any local plan. Every household got a leaflet, and I accept the point made earlier that we only had 4,000 comments, but that's an awful lot more comments than any other planning policy consultation we've done. And in terms of the parish councils, those discussions are ongoing. We've met with councillor Adams, the portfolio holder, all the parishes who are affected by the Green Belt changes in the last few weeks, and that's been a very helpful and very productive discussion, and that will continue on. So hopefully that helps, Chairman.
Thank you, Matthew. And finally, Councillor Brian Enders.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder if I'm alone in feeling a great deal of disappointment that little seems to have changed in our spatial strategy over the last year or two, other than the fact that the number of homes per year has gone up from 470 to 519. I suppose, living in Cranly as I do, I'm seriously concerned, because I look at page 10, it says it already there, the constraints of the Green Belt and the AONB, and of course the special protection areas as well. So that rather drops out a lot of Farnham too, perhaps, but it then falls to Cranly. Waverley's largest village indeed, supposedly England's largest village as well. We don't have those constraints that could hold developers back, and whilst we wait for a local plan, whilst we wait for a neighbourhood plan as well, developers gather around kindly like bees around an open pot of jam. We have had planning permissions granted already in Horsham Road and Amlets Lane, both of which, in my view, having lived there for 40 years, I believe are far less sustainable than perhaps some other applications elsewhere in the borough. We don't at the moment have an air quality problem in Cranly, but if we do find ourselves with that additional 1,200 houses that Mrs Fowkeski mentioned, we probably will. Traffic in our high street at the moment moves most of the time, particularly when lorries are reversing into the Co-op Yard, it moves as a snail's pace or it stops altogether. And I think you put another 1,200 houses into Cranly, it will probably be the equivalent of having lorries reversed into the Co-op Yard about every half hour throughout the working day. I have heard it said, and I think it was Mr Seaborn said, there is strong support for building at Dunsfold Park. Possibly there is, but if you actually live in Allfold, Dunsfold and Cranly, I doubt that you will actually find too much support there when you actually measure the impact that will have on Cranly itself. We will become another stalemate there. Aside from the additional houses in Cranly, if we put more houses, I don't object to developing on Dunsfold, I think that it has to be sustainable. But the impact on Cranly has not, I don't believe, been assessed. If you look back to 2007, the Secretary of State declared that the application there for 2,601 houses was unsustainable. Nothing there has changed, and I said it in this chamber a month or so ago, the only thing that has changed is the Secretary of State. Every other circumstance that prevails around Dunsfold is identical to what it was back in 2007, other than, of course, we do now have an MPPF. But then the MPPF really does favour, indeed it thoroughly supports, sustainable development. What does this mean for Dunsfold? Is it suddenly recognised as becoming sustainable now? I go back really, I could ramble on, I suppose, Chairman, but really I would support what Mr Edwards has actually said. For God's sake, can we actually get on with a local plan? We have lots of very, very enthusiastic people around the borough in our towns and villages wanting to get through with our neighbourhood plans. Cranly is going to consult, perhaps the last consultation on our neighbourhood plan within the next week or two. And they are waiting for a neighbourhood plan, because really, we can't set a neighbourhood plan in concrete until Waverley has got its neighbourhood, its local plan accepted.
Thank you, Councillor.
Yes. So as I say, I support Mr Edwards. Let's get on with it, please.
Right, Councillor Simon Inglethby.
Thank you, Chairman. This document seems to rather assume that there will be development at Dunsfold Park and elsewhere. It says in here, including any housing at Dunsfold Aerodrome within the overall strategy is still subject to the satisfactory outcome of the transport assessment work. Could I just ask what happens if it doesn't produce a satisfactory outcome? Will the people who are compiling it just be sent away to do it again and come back with the right answer? Thank you.
Matthew Heans.
See if I can answer that question. I think the reality of the transport work is that what we're doing is testing different ways of delivering the housing. And clearly there are different impacts depending on where the focus for housing is. So it's not a question of, I think, of saying that the conclusions of this, therefore we will not deliver housing in that location, is actually about testing different alternatives and coming up, and frankly I have to be honest, with the least bad option. Because the way the government has phrased the MPPF is that you cannot use transport as a reason why not to deliver housing unless you can identify that the impacts are severe. And that severe includes looking in great deal at what the opportunities are to mitigate that impact, and by that I'm talking about infrastructure to support it. And what Graham and his team have done is that we've looked very closely at what other local plan inspectors have done in terms of transport and how they've assessed this issue, because yes, it's an issue in Waverley, but it's by no means an issue uniquely to Waverley. And the clear message we're getting from inspectors is that congestion in itself isn't a reason to say no to development. It's about severity. And by severity, one of the interesting challenges we've got is getting a highway engineer to define what severity is. And they're very reluctant, but I think the emerging view from inquiries is that severity is about highway safety. Now, if you can get a highway, and I think air quality as well, and if you can get a highway engineer to be absolutely clear that the impact of his development impacts on highway safety, taking into account any mitigation, now that's an argument for resisting that level of housing in that particular location. But it's quite clear from the wording and the views of inspectors across the country is that is a very high bar. And I will repeat the comment I made before, congestion is not in itself a reason to come up with a lower housing number, and that is very, very clear, and that is absolutely clear, the intention of the government in terms of the MPPF. And it's clearly a very hard message for us to give to you and for you to give to residents across Waverley, but that was the absolute intention of the government when they rewrote the MPPF. Sorry, I've rambled on a little bit about sort of wider issues, but it is worth rehearsing the rules, the tests which the government have imposed on us in terms of local plan making. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Matthew. I think that really concludes all the speakers on this particular subject. I would like to say that I intend...
Sorry, Chairman, I thought I was at the end of a very long queue. The queue is obviously finished, and I hadn't put my hand up, and do apologize. Well, first, the first statement I'd like to make is, you said that councillor Ban put forward a detailed list of reasons why he is not happy with the idea of Dunsfold Aerodrome site and the various things that go with it. And I'd like to endorse, without trying to repeat it, it's done very well, and I would like to endorse that statement or the statements that are there in general about Dunsfold and the developments at Dunsfold. So if that can be included, that would be great. I'm sorry, I didn't realise that officers hadn't had an opportunity to see that. There've been lots of eloquent statements about communities and infrastructure and everything else. Eastern planning, or sorry, local members around Dunsfold had the benefit of a briefing with regard to the expected proposal and application for 1,800 houses at Dunsfold. And we've got quite a lot of detail there, which is not within this document here, and therefore, members in the wider area of Waverley won't have had the opportunity of seeing this. But it really smacks against the statements, very strong and very interesting statements that other councils have made about maintaining a community. Carol Coburn made this very strongly about maintaining and improving the community of our existing villages and towns, et cetera. And then at the very end said, and therefore we should develop Dunsfold Park as well, with no community and nothing there. That briefing that we had, and I don't expect that the application that comes forward will show very much difference to that that we, as local members, were given the opportunity of discussing and looking at. It had a church, I think, and I haven't brought the document with me, so perhaps I'll return it down, had the church, which I think was bigger than the village school that it was proposing, and yet it was a primary school. A primary school to me is a school that deals with children from four through to 11. Can you imagine? Well, I haven't got the numbers here and it's no good, trying to bandy them around because we wouldn't be able to absorb them anyway, but the numbers were dramatically wrong. And it was a small village shop, I think. There was a whole range of different things which I thought were, and other colleagues thought were particularly, well, unclear as to how that would achieve creating a community, which is what we want to do. I am fearful of dumping, and I do mean dumping, in fact, I just realised that I wrote down what Mr Orange said, he said dump it on Dunsfold, dumping all these people onto Dunsfold without any form of infrastructure there whatsoever. How long would it take to actually create the right environment and infrastructure for the people, 1,800 people? And of course, the way it's been designed, it will expand from 1,800 to 2,600 to 3,400. So there's opportunity for that, in the way that they have done the design, they've already shown us those drawings which show how we would increase the size from 1,800 to 3,400 and perhaps beyond. Where is the infrastructure that's going to be there? Where is the community cohesion that's going to be there? And of course, where does all the traffic go? Nobody's mentioned Bramley tonight in terms of traffic, so I'll just say, yes, we will have constant stationary traffic going through Bramley, because the width of Bramley High Street is about the width of what everybody says is a totally inadequate road, which is Stopholts Hill going into Dunsfold at present. So I don't believe it's right to do that. I would much rather see personally Dunsfold providing a growing, wonderful business community and research park, technology centre, et cetera, which is what the trend is going towards to some degree. But I think I'm probably a voice in the wilderness in wishing that, and I believe that other communities ought to be growing with it. And I recognise the pain that that's going to create, places like Cranly, they clearly feel that pain in terms of growing over what is some wonderful local countryside. But nevertheless, I think it's better to enhance our existing communities than trying desperately to create a new community, which I don't think is possible in the size that they have there and the plans that they have put forward so far, which I presume will be replicated in the planning application that we will come into considering in the months ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ban. Maureen has made comments of all the comments so far. You're going to be very brief, councillor, because we must get on with this agenda.
I would be very, very brief, Chairman. I would ask just one simple question. In 2017, this country will be invited to consider whether it stays in the European Union or it leaves it. Could I ask then, should we choose to leave? Will there still be a need for special protection areas for the Dartford Warbler, who I'm assured are moving north or not? Thank you.
Right. I don't think anybody knows the answer to that. Right, just ready saying that we must move on, councillor Fowkeski, because I have visitors from outside from the Environment Agency who are wishing to speak on the next subject. So if you could be very brief.
Chairman, 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 I will be as brief as I possibly can. I just want to say, if we ignore Dunsfold Park, let it be at our peril. And when you talk about enhancing communities, and based on what the last speaker said there, oh, sorry, councillor Boyer, I'm lost for words quite frankly now, you'll destroy our communities, you won't enhance them. It's, you know, and let's be realistic, we've got one road in, one road out. You've got to have a major development to give you the infrastructure that you need to actually pay for some of the developments that you're talking about. You cannot do it in isolation. Let's be realistic, let's have a vision, let's stop being anti-Dunsfold, and let's think about what we can do going forward and get this policy under our belts and protect everybody in it and give us an opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, in summing up, I would like to say that there's been a lot of opinions spoken here tonight, and I think we should consider that there is a Green Belt review taking place, whether or not we should build a certain amount of houses on Dunsfold Aerodrome, and also there's a transport assessment being considered which will incorporate the widening and possibly the navigation through Bramley Park or Bramley on the A281 and also the A31 around Farnham. So there are a lot of questions which have to be answered. I don't think we can do this all before April 2016, there's too many questions to be answered. I would propose that we say to the executive, let's go forward for the existing plans we have of 591 houses for 10 years, and during that period we will look again at Dunsfold Park, we'll look at the Green Belt review, and we'll look at the infrastructure and belt review, and we'll look at the infrastructure and hopefully get the whole thing in place. But I think, I agree with councillor Ellis and I agree with councillor Edwards, we must get on with this. And I think a 10-year review suggested would be the answer. Thank you. Now, if I can ask Maureen to just read out the comments that we'll talk to the executive.
If you would forgive me if I've missed or misinterpreted anything here, I'll read out the points that I've made and obviously, if you want to change anything or add anything. Basically, the committee recognises the difficulties and constraints imposed on the council in drawing up their local plan. The observations that I've picked up, there are quite a few of them, that evidence is needed to justify housing and transport plans and to inform the strategy. Priority is needed to direct development away from mitigation areas. Dunstfold needs to be large enough to sustain a village, block green site developments and look at the largest brownfield site in the borough, which is Dunstfold. It would be more realistic to bring the plan back to 10 years. Detailed transport assessments are needed throughout the borough. There is a need to get on with it. Obviously, the words need to be changed slightly. There is a need for a more robust, evidence-based plan and to consider the impact specifically on Cranly and Farnham. There is a need to protect the green belt. The Dunstfold development will impact on Cranly and needs to be assessed further. And to sum up, there is a need to get on with the local plan as neighbourhood plans cannot be completed until it is. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Maureen. Now, I must move on with the next item, which is the preparations for severe weather. And Mayor, I apologise to Mr Parr, to keep you waiting. I'm sorry about that. We'll get on. So if I can ask Richard Homewood to introduce...
Sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just while we're doing the changeover, I'm not sure that we actually agreed any of that. You just sort of raced straight on. You didn't ask if there was anything missing or whether we agreed it or anything. So, you know, I thought, well done. I mean, I fancy making all those notes, but, you know, we didn't have a chance to just even consider whether there's anything missing.
Right. Then I've been advised that the committee may make comments on what Maureen has written down to propose.
If I may, Chairman.
Yep.
Yes, if you'd like to make comments on any of those notes, I'm not a planner and, you know, I perhaps have misinterpreted something or something that somebody said. So please do give me some further information.
Well, the one point that I made at the very beginning was endorsing councillor Mike Band's page of comments that we've all had the opportunity of seeing. I wish to endorse them and therefore, for those to go forward, to be included in the comments that are made.
I think this will be forwarded in entirety to the executive.
Thank you very much, that's all.
I think he's commenting as a local member, not as mayor. Well, he is the mayor, but he is a member of Eastern Planning Committee. He is not a member of this committee. And the comments made by other members who are not members of this committee presumably have also been taken out.
Can I just interrupt? The comments of all the other members who were not members of this committee have been taken into account, so councillor Mike Band's comments will also be taken into account. Thank you. I'm sorry, we must get on. Richard Homewood, you'd like to introduce the next.
Thank you, Chairman. At the last meeting, members were anxious to be reassured that we were prepared for severe weather and that the other agencies were also prepared for severe weather in the coming winter months. I was asked to invite a number of key agencies along to this meeting. Surrey County Council have declined to attend the meeting and their policy is they will deal with issues you raised through the area committees. That was the message I got back from them. They don't have a policy of attending scrutiny committees at the boroughs and districts. Ivan Parks is here from the Environment Agency and I'd like to invite him to speak first to outline the Environment Agency's position. And then Lawrence McCamick, our Emergency Planning and Resilience Officer, who's involved with the Surrey Resilience Forum, will give you an overview of the arrangements the other multi-agencies are putting in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I will just outline the points that were in the paper. So, starting with the improved river and sea levels. They have been published since June 2010, but following feedback, they have been improved and some additional sites have been included. So the service will now show data for five days, which just improves when people want to actually see the pattern and whether the levels are actually rising or falling. They can actually see a greater time span. The second one, the second point is the improved numbers registered for flood warning service. We have been working closely with the telephone providers to automatically register landline telephone numbers, but really to reflect the increased use of mobile phones, we're working on a pilot project with EE to add mobile customers where they've not yet signed up for flood warnings. And on the third one, information and services for people and businesses. This is using the Floodline Warnings Direct to actually provide additional information, to provide links to information and services to help people prepare for flooding, such as the new live flood warning information and river levels on the internet. We would also, we will remind people about the flood warning codes and encourage them to check their registration details. Multi-agency preparation and response to flooding. We've got a series of procedures and plans in place and our duty staff are actually available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's a range of different roles, but we don't provide a response single-handed. The scale of the flooding dictates whether we work with the boroughs or with the county council. And this is something Lawrence will probably be picking up on a little more anyway. But we'll be working with the LRFs and each LRF has a multi-agency flood plan, which sets out how we respond and how other partners respond in terms of the multi-agency response. On top of those points, I just wanted to make a, reflect back on the winter 1314 flooding and a few other things that have actually been put in place since then. There's a new flood warning site that was installed at Catterall Road Bridge, recognising that that is a critical point where there is a very rapid response and it comes, backs up behind the bridge. So that's to provide an additional flood warning service. Also, there has been a lot of work on the forecasting and there's an alarm, a new alarm has been put on the rain gauge at Borden, which is the primary gauge for the upper catchment, which provides the flood warning service for Godoming and for the rest of the upper Riverway catchment. Right. Maintenance, there is a, there's currently planned maintenance on a number of the watercourses in the borough. Farnham Park Stream, the way north in Farnham, Frenchham Vale Stream, Helditch just here, the River Rock as well in Godoming, as well as the Alderbrook Stream, Nuthurst Stream, Little Mead Brook, Holdhurst Brook, Cranly Waters. So some of the key areas where maintenance is critical, particularly at structures such as trash screens and following a warning, following a heavy rainfall alert, our operations teams will be going out and doing works to clear those trash screens. And they will do preemptive flood runs to those key structures and grills. We are prepared for the Christmas and New Year holiday. We've got a fully populated roster for eight-hour shifts 24/7. And we are a national organisation and do pull in resources as and when required, depending on this, from other areas, depending on the need. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parr, is there any members who would like to ask questions, Mr. Parr, while he's here?
Yes, thank you very much for that. You did at the final stage, actually, nothing written in here about, particularly about Cranly Waters, but you did mention Cranly Waters. And there is one particular point, you mentioned trash screens. I hope that you also assume that we have a, goodness, I've lost the name, but where the river passes under the old railway line, an aqueduct, that sort of area, whether that quite regularly gets blocked. I've inspected it a number of times recently, it hasn't been blocked, there's been nothing there. I'm not quite sure whether it's been cleaned or whether it's washed through. Either way, we haven't had anything there, so I would like those included. And perhaps also, one of the other areas that affects Bramley, obviously Cranly Waters, but also the Haskins Stream as it comes down from the hillside and through the village in various places. We've got some information on that and where there's possibility of blockages, which we have had in the past, actually, where it goes under the A281, where the various pipes under there have been blocked in the past, but seem to be being kept clear. But I hope that they're within the scope of the areas that you're covering.
Mr. Parr, we're fully aware that you're not probably as familiar with Waverley as perhaps we are, so you may not be able to answer these questions at the moment. I would be grateful if perhaps if you were not able to answer them, you could look into them and perhaps respond at a later time.
Well, on the Haskins Stream, I know that on 27th of October, we moved a large fallen tree behind Fisher Road Close, so just before the confluence. So our ops teams have been doing a lot of preemptive work and I think this follows on from the recovery project following the 201314 floods, where there was a million pounds spent on maintenance throughout the Riverway catchment. So I just would like to sort of re-emphasise, it's actually not just trash screens or grills, it's actually also key structures. So ensuring that, in this case, the Cranly Waters can actually get underneath the viaduct just down below Bramley there. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick question for you. With regard to flooding and the danger of flooding, the key issue here is communication with those affected and also communication with the ward member so they can take action if necessary. Can we ensure that we have full confidence in the communication strategy employed by the Environment Agency? We need to know as soon as possible and that information's got to get out there as quickly as possible. Okay, thank you.
We, there were, with the power outage in 1314 during the floods, that had a major impact upon the gauge at Westbrook Mill, which partly, there's been a major overhaul of that in order to try and avoid that such situation happening again. And also because there is a secondary gauge down at Catterall Road Bridge, it's just to provide some greater resilience within Godoming. That's, obviously, there are other gauges, but there's been, over the last 12 months, a modelling exercise to actually update the forecasting model so that we can provide a better and hopefully more robust and earlier service. And that is, that is the means that we would actually communicate, rather than direct phone calls to particular people, it would actually be through issuing the warning or alert.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a general point and don't want you to think I'm picking on you from the Environment Agency. These reports are a joy to read, very clear, but many of them seem out of date. When your report refers to, in your case, December 2014 and Wednesday, the 7th of January 2015, as if it's in the future, you do wonder if this paper's a year old. There's also reference to, was it Parsons Brinkoff, in, after March 2015, as if that was still in the future too. But as I say, this is a criticism common to all of these reports. Possibly accepting waivers, which was pretty good. Finished. Thank you, councillor. I think we've tried to as much as possible update the reports, not only from the Environment Agency, but from all the agencies. And councillor, and Richard Homewood would now explain what's been happening.
If I can, Chair. Obviously, in terms of communications, I think Waverley officers have a role to play in ensuring that information is cascaded to local councillors. The council will receive information from the Environment Agency through the multi-agency forum, and I think we need to look at how we will cascade that information to elected members. That's something we will be looking at and to ensure that that happens in the future. In terms of the documents in front of you this evening, the larger document, the Waverley Infrastructure Resilience Group, is last year's document. Lawrence is here this evening to give you an update on that document, to pick up on the issues in there and the actions in there that were identified. So hopefully Lawrence can reassure you that action has been taken on everything in there and that we are prepared for this winter.
Right, thank you, Richard. Mr. Parr, thank you very much for your attendance. Much appreciated and apologies for keeping you waiting. Thank you. Right. If I can ask Lawrence McCamick to start the report, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, so within your documents is the Waverley Infrastructure Report. This is just the updates as of November 2015 from all those agencies listed within that have provided answers to questions that were raised by the chairman and members of this overview and scrutiny committee last time. So the first part, and as the first document said, the Environment Agency has got an up-to-date duty roster and they have taken maintenance issues. Ivan here has been nice enough to provide those answers. Within Surrey County Council and for their side of it, they have recruited a community resilience officer, a lady called Liz Fowler, who has taken up the charge across Surrey to actually involve community groups in resilience matters, predominantly for flooding, but for other severe weather matters as well. For within the Godoming area, the Godoming flood group itself continues to meet and met on November 5th of this month with Environment Agency partners and Godoming Town Council as well as Waverley Borough Staff to make sure that things like the way alleviation scheme are continuing to meet the residents' requirements. Thames Water have put in a, along Mead Row and Cassell, particularly within the Godoming area, flip valves for those that suffered sewage back into their homes. Those flip valves and additional pumping will make sure that that kind of waste and grey water does not return back into their homes unless it is through an overground source. But that will not be coming back up through the sewage system at this point. Thames Water have also put in additional telemetry and functions for all their pumping stations in and around the Waverley Borough area so that they are not caught out or discharged during any power outage, so that those particular pumping stations will continue to move water and sewage regardless of any flooding impacts or power outages that might happen in the immediate instance. For utilities side, Scottish and Southern Energy and UK Power Networks have been putting out their priority list... out their priority listings for vulnerable residents all across Waverley Borough and for the remainder of Surrey. And that is to promote vulnerable persons, when there is a power outage, that they will be getting welfare and specific treatment from those particular utilities as commercial entities in providing that welfare to their clients. For the Waverley Borough Council, for our side, and following that flooding in 2013-14, we identified a large, larger amount of riparian ownership that we needed to take advantage of, including ditches additionally that we needed to manage. As of this month, we have 12 kilometres of ditches, 74 culverts that we have undertaken work on to bring them back up to a respectable level to cope with any flooding or surface water or fluvial impacts that might happen to that. We have been promoting the Making Waves and Waverley Borough Magazine winter resilience messages, particularly the public health ones around keeping warm, keeping well, keeping safe, and to promote those messages out to the wider public as part of the local resilience forums plan to promote health and wellbeing over the winter period for members of the public. For salting and gritting within Waverley, as I know it does become a topic or subject around this time, within our particular contractors, we've made sure that we have excess tonnage, in effect of 10 additional tonnes, that are distributed between Cranley and Farnham to make sure that we can accommodate for the car park sheltered housing and other areas of responsibility that we have to maintain.
Right, thank you, Mr Parr. Are there any questions that members would like to ask? Councillor Byram.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, reading the Thames Water Report and part of the local resilience, it reads as if it only considers that it's looking at Gottoming. Anybody else reading it? In my parish or whatever, we believe that Bramley doesn't exist because we didn't have any problems. We did have problems, we have two pumping stations in Bramley. This is already known with the officers, but I'm only questioning the information not being in the report and therefore not being recognised as a problem. We had two pumping stations, one failed completely, and we had the problems with sewage being pumped out or releasing inadvertently into fields alongside into the streams. A second pumping station, which I'm not quite clear whether it actually failed or just didn't cope. It's not clear to me, but either way, we had tankers offloading excess sewage or wastewater, et cetera, through many, many weeks, if not months, whilst they were trying to cope. None of that is mentioned. I would sincerely love, and I've already actually asked officers before about this question, it's not in Thames Water's report, and that's what I'm querying.
Thank you, councillor Byram. I don't know whether you're able to respond to that on the pumping stations in Bramley.
So councillor Byram, for two parts, and we've had, I know we've had a separate conversation on this matter. Within this report, this is a document that came out from a group initially chaired by Jeremy Hunt and was specifically focused on the infrastructure and resilience matters around the Gottoming area. So the Thames Water and other infrastructure that was looked at at that time was purely focused in and around the Gottoming area, including the way alleviation scheme. That has since expanded beyond this report. For the two pumping stations you mentioned, one has been fitted with additional telemetry, and the one that failed, I should say, has been fitted with additional telemetry, as well as a non-stop return valve on the manhole cover to prevent sewage actually being discharged. The second one was unfortunately down to a lack of ability for it to cope with a volume of surface water that was actually forced to deal with at the time. That wasn't a matter of sewage, it was just the excess water that was, took it out of commission.
Thank you, councillor Edwards.
Yes, just going on to page 33, communications, which is the key issue, I think, again. The second paragraph says there's an exercise in regime, and it's cascaded to all the heads of service and whatever. Now, obviously, we do have changes within the council. Is part of the regime to ensure that all new staff are made aware of their responsibilities regarding this matter?
So it's my responsibility as the officer within Waverley to educate every officer that comes in as part of their induction in regards to emergency preparedness. In respect to the communications aspect, we have an emergency communications protocol that is held with the duty officers. That's a rotating shift between heads of services and directors that will take the lead to communicate emergency matters, both to ward members and to key members of emergency staff that need to respond during these times.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. Thames Water, I see that in particular, the sewers in Catterall have been cleaned and all non-return valves have been serviced, which is good, and I'm sure there's been a lot of other work gone on in other areas as well. But do we now have, I mean, this is Thames Water, I know, so, but do they have a regular programme of clearing? I mean, are we going to in 10 years' time, 15 years' time, have the same things happen again? Or have they taken on board, do you suppose, or do you know, that regular cleaning and clearing is actually necessary? Are they able to do that? That's one question, if I may, Chairman. Ditches and culverts, ditch clearance work, is there a rolling programme? Are we working our way through the ditches and culverts? Because only five mentioned here, and I know, I know of one area which is quite severely affected when it rains hard. One other thing, please, Chairman, with your indulgence. Communications. I noticed that, you know, there's a lot of emphasis put on training of staff. What about training of councillors? What about, you know, how is that going to be rolled out to councillors? Because I think that we can take, play a large part in that, actually, in letting our residents know what's going on. So are they involved as well? I haven't had any training myself, so, you know, I'd like to know when it's going to come.
Chair, I think in terms of the role of councillors in any emergency incident, that is a separate issue we need to address, and we need to perhaps think about some sort of training event for members to clarify their role in emergency incidents. Because I know it is a very sensitive issue, where members feel they're not empowered to engage with their communities because of a lack of information. And we need to look at how that information is cascaded to members. But members also then need to understand what their role is, because it is extremely difficult in managing an emergency incident to have more people running around doing things or instructing people or telling people things than is necessary. And we need to ensure that the mixed messages don't get through, that passing on a message several times, it can be distorted. So we need to make sure that there's clarity about who tells who what and what individual people's roles are in an emergency situation. I think, therefore, we need to look at what sort of training event we can organise for members to do just that.
I think, Richard, also, maybe perhaps a handbook that could be distributed to all councillors on who they should contact, when and how, it would be useful. Thank you. And the other two questions that...
In respect to the other two questions, unfortunately, I can't give you an answer in regards to the maintenance schedule for Thames Water. We'd have to address that to them directly, I'm afraid. I know that the monitoring of the cleanliness flow and everything is done by the new telemetry that they've put in, and additional telemetry's been put in, basically extending through, from Alder Shot right through Guildford down to Cranley. So how quickly that's been achieved, I can't give you an answer to that, I'm afraid. The last one on culverts that you requested, the culverts that we had ownership of, that we knew about at the time, were about three kilometres of it. Following the floods, that has more than trebled. That was all put on to a rolling maintenance programme. As of June this year, all of 12 kilometres that we know currently and the 74 culverts that we have direct ownership of have been cleaned and maintained by our contractor.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd love to come back. It's on communications now, which is something that I'm very interested in, in that I'm the flood warden for my particular area, where we had flooding of five dwellings and the imminent flooding of perhaps another 15 or so. I was refused to have the phone warning system or the text warning system or whatever because I wasn't in the flood zone. I'm only about 100 yards from it, but I wasn't allowed to have that information. I then made lots of representations, they said they put me on, but when this report came out, that was about a year ago, but when this report came out, I reinvestigated because I never, ever had confirmation from the Environment Agency that my name had been put on the list and I would be included. It has now been done, and I've had an email from that, so I'm very happy with that, but it just flags up the problem of how we communicate and get information to people that may wish to be involved or would wish to understand what's happening in their community in close proximity, et cetera, of what's going on, without being refused, simply because, as they put it, we're not, I'm not in the flood plain. I'm very pleased about that, by the way, because I can now tell the insurance company that I don't need to declare that I'm 100 yards from Cranley Waters, because the EA told me I'm not in the flood zone, so that's great. I know I'm not, but that's another point. So yes, it's just raising that flag about communications. How do we make sure that we, we as members, other members who would wish to know about what's going on in areas where they have concerns about residents, that they can get it without actually being in the flood zone?
Yes, I think your point is well made, and I think, Richard, I think you've already, Mr Homewood, have already made a note that perhaps we might need a handbook on who to talk to. Right, if I can now go on to the committee work programme on page 35, you will see there a list of the items which are due for discussion in January, March, June and September of next year. Are you happy that I, are you content to denote this report, or would you like other items to be added to it? Councillor Coburn.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'd certainly like a couple of items to be considered, both actually related to planning. Seeing the shop fronts, just reminds me a bit of the grandchildren's attitude to homework, you know, we'll do the easy bits first, you know, we'll do the colouring in and we'll leave the maths till the difficult, you know, the difficult bits till later. I think the SPD shop fronts is very good, don't get me wrong, and I replied to it. But I do think we have other things in planning, such as neighbourhood planning. I think as, should we as an ONS committee not be looking at neighbourhood planning, at how it's being done in this borough, what the policy is of this borough? I feel it's one of these things that we know is going on, but we don't ever seem to have a coordinated approach to neighbourhood planning as a borough, which I think we should. And related to that is the revised avoidance strategy. Are we going to have a chance to comment on that? Because that's coming up for renewal. And again, I think with all these issues with SANGs, anybody not up to speed on SANGs and mitigation and special protection areas, how are you going to make a decision on all the other issues? So there's just so many important things in planning that I feel we should perhaps ask to be informed on in this committee in different ways.
Right, thank you. I think Maureen, you made a note that neighbourhood planning and the avoidance strategy, if we can put that on the agenda for the 19th of January, if possible. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. One of the issues that's come out in Haysamere, which I'm very concerned about, and it's to do with health and wellbeing strategy, is that the cuts have been made to the services by Surrey County Council. And in particular, in one particular instance, I'd like to mention the youth worker, there's no youth worker in Haysamere anymore, and it's just been cut. I think there's one in Cranley, and I think there's one in Farnham, but there's not one in, or maybe it's Gottoming, whatever. We don't have one. Now, I wasn't aware of what implications this had on the, on the town, but there's nowhere for young people. Now, this is crazy. I mean, I don't understand what the strategy is from Surrey County Council, because it's a statutory service that they should provide, but, you know, we've not discussed it here. I don't know whether any of the officers have heard about it or what their thoughts are. But the point is, we do need some health, some youth workers, because, you know, if we catch them young, if we, you know, it'll sort future problems out. But to just abandon them is not only unfortunate, but unacceptable, and I think we really need to do something here. Thank you.
Can you comment on youth workers?
Not directly. It is a Surrey County Council responsibility. It lies outside of the core health and wellbeing agenda, which is primarily adult and children's social care and health. But if members were particularly concerned, they could always request somebody from Surrey County Council Youth Service to come along and explain their approach and their strategy and what to expect going forward.
Right, if I can now ask Maureen if she'd read out the items. Oh, there's one other, I'm sorry.
I wanted, there doesn't appear to be a date for the Brightwell Street redevelopment, it just says November 2015. Aren't we bringing that forward?
This is an item flagging up a future potential report, but the timing of that report will depend on the outcome of negotiations that are currently taking place.
Can I just ask, is that just funding as well? Are you just looking at funding for that? Aren't we meant to be, does it make so much the need for the council to grant landlord consent for changes of the Brightwell Scheme and to agree to remove the Gostrey Centre on the list of required elements? Is that not going to be taken into consideration as well? Thank you.
Chairman, if there are, if there are any other aspects related to Brightwells, I'm sure that they will be put on the forward plan. But at the moment, the main issue is the resolution of the funding for the scheme.
I think we're, Mary, the councillor for Deske.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, on page 38, the top one, which relates to a subject we just spoke about earlier on this evening, I'm a little bit confused as to the decision to endorse the preferred spatial strategy and the associated strategic site allocation. I'm not sure we've endorsed either of those, so how are we going forward with a clear objective on what has been agreed? Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, if I may, just to confirm that that's the executive forward programme, so that's the decision going forward to the executive rather than part of the committee work programme for this committee.
Councillor Edwards.
Can I ask the safer neighbourhood partnership, is that part, we're involved in that, I believe. Now, one of the other issues that's come up in Haysamere, they've withdrawn one of our policemen, so they've cut us by 50% basically. And I don't know whether we were consulted on that or what the idea is, but, you know, one policeman for an area the size of Haysamere, Hinded is crazy, and I think, I think it covers Chinniford as well, I'm not sure. But I don't understand how, who gets consulted and how it's decided upon, but it seems to be that, you know, I know we need to cut services to the bone, but this is beyond the bone. I mean, it's a decapitation almost, so I think we need to do something about this.
I do agree with you, and I think once a year, we do get a representation from Surrey Police. If we could arrange for perhaps the members of Surrey Police to come in and answer questions. Thank you. Councillor Byram.
I'm searching through, Chairman, and I can't find anything at all about waste and recycling on our programmes. I know that we've got a plan, or there is a proposal to change the way that we deal with, or the place that we deal with all of our recycling materials. We haven't heard any details whatsoever, either on where it goes, whether it changes the types of materials that we're able to recycle or not, and indeed, what the problem is with regard to costs. It looks like we're going to probably increase the cost, but I don't know. I would like to understand that at some stage.
I think that councillor Edwards will be commenting on the progress report on recycling later on in this committee, will you not? So perhaps we'll have an answer to that. Thank you. If there are no other questions, are you happy that I asked Maureen to read out the items that will be put on to next month's agenda?
Can I just ask a question?
Sorry.
Okay, so, so can I just ask, it's my understanding that this is not finite, and the list that we're going to hear now is not finite. ONS is an organic system, and we can add anything that we feel is really important at any time, so I believe it would be wrong to be constrained by a list at the beginning of the year. Am I right?
Chairman, it's on every agenda, that's usually the plan, so you can add items during the year as you suggest.
Yeah, I would only ask that sufficient notice be given to the officers so that a response can be properly written. Right, Maureen, if you could write out, read out.
Thank you, chairman. There were just the two specific items that were requested to be added to the programme, which was the neighbourhood planning and revised avoidance strategy. With regard to the youth worker, I think it was, I think it was suggested that Surrey County Council be invited in to address the committee. The Gostrey development, redevelopment was covered, and the safer neighbourhood partnership regarding the police, that will be covered by Surrey Police when they come in on their annual visit.
Are all those changes agreed? I'd now like to move on to the Farnham air quality, item eight. I'd like Richard Homewood to introduce the report, please.
Thank you, chairman. You, members will recall that the last scrutiny meeting, you had a very detailed report on air quality, which was the three-year updating and screening assessment, which had been submitted to DEFRA and been accepted as good practice by DEFRA, and they supported the findings of that review. That review clearly identified continuing air quality problems in Farnham and in Godlemine, and that more work needed to be done on that, and certainly identified diesel vehicles as one of the main problems associated with the pollution, certainly in the Farnham area. It did indicate that over time, levels of pollution from diesel engines should decline with the Euro six standards coming into place, and other work around traffic management related to the plans for the centre of Farnham. We have bid for funding in the past to help us with our studies and plans into air quality management in Farnham, and we pointed out last time that we have now applied to DEFRA for more support to the tune of fifty thousand pounds to assist us in evaluating the viability of a low emission zone in Farnham. That would enable us control vehicle access to Farnham by ANPR, which is Automatic Number Plate Recognition Systems, which would then penalise polluting vehicles if they did enter the Farnham area. Obviously, we need the finance to carry out that study, so we are awaiting the results from the bid we've put to DEFRA, and we're hoping to hear the result of that by the end of this month. Should we get that funding? We have consultants on hand to begin that study and carry out that work over the next few months, and that could start as early as January next year, subject to the funding being made available. Thank you, chair.
Right, thank you. You should note that Farnham air quality is of vital importance, so we have asked Richard Homewood to update the DEFRA response in our next meeting in January. Now, I have two members of the council who are not members of this committee who wish to speak on air quality. councillor Andy MacLeod.
Thank you, chairman. I'll keep my remarks on this fairly brief. The reason I've asked to speak is that probably I get more concern expressed by residents about poor air quality and what causes it, which is traffic congestion and probably anything else. And people are very concerned it's getting worse and the effect on the health, their own health, and the health of their children. I've read through the various reports over the years, going back to the original air quality action plan, seven years ago in two thousand and eight, and it says to me that the council does do a very good job in monitoring and reporting on air quality, which is very important, but as far as I can see, actually, nothing has actually happened in terms of action to actually improve air quality. There've been lots of reviews, lots of assessments. It once mentioned in this report that eighty-five thousand pounds was spent on the project assessing a new transport assessment in central Farnham, and it was decided that spending eight million pounds wouldn't be worth it. And I'm just worried that, you know, yet again, we're going forward with another report, another reassessment of this automatic number plate recognition. Maybe that will come to something, but as far as I can see, and I may be wrong, in the seven or so years since the action plan was brought in, there's been lots of good work done in monitoring, reporting, but no actual actions at all. Nothing has actually happened that has done anything to improve the air quality or diminish the pure air quality in Farnham. That's my concern, and that's the concern of residents. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Mr MacLeod. I think, would you like to respond, or you are in fact doing something at the moment?
I think the council has really highlighted the dilemma here, that Waverley Borough Council is responsible for monitoring air quality and reporting on air quality, but as he pointed out, the eight million pound solution that was identified for Farnham was predominantly a traffic management scheme, which is a responsibility of Surrey County Council, and it's their decision whether they would invest that money or not. The low emission zone approach is less costly, clearly, and if it's felt that that would be a viable way of reducing pollution levels in Farnham, that may well be a way forward by preventing polluting vehicles entering the area. That's perhaps a simpler way of approaching it, but we do need to do the studies first to see whether the scientists and the experts think it will reduce air quality, sorry, air pollution levels sufficiently to resolve the issues you've got there. We will continue to monitor, we will continue to try to identify sources of funding, to do further work with the county council, but ultimately, we are reliant on the county council to be the major funder of any schemes in Farnham to reduce pollution.
Councillor MacLeod, does that answer your question?
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for the answer.
Right, fine. May I then ask members to comment, note the report? councillor Wood.
I thought you had two speakers from, you didn't put your name down, no?
councillor Wood, he's gone.
Right, yes, no, I just really want to endorse that, and, you know, I've sat on this council longer than councillor MacLeod and heard these reports are going over and over, and I take the point that we monitor, and we probably monitor brilliantly, I have not a problem with that, do have a problem with thirty seconds, and I will ignore that. But, you know, we can't just wash our hands of this completely and utterly. You're right, we should be backing schemes that Surrey are putting forward, we should be putting pressure on Surrey to improve the situation, and we shouldn't let up on that, because we, as a borough, can't do it. We monitor, we can't put the scheme in, we can certainly give Surrey all the encouragement to get on with it. Low emissions, who knows further down the line whether that's going to be a good idea, but we can't, as I say, say that we're totally innocent here, because as I said in an earlier section, one of the reasons that our roads are so polluted is we keep building more and more houses. The roads don't get any bigger or any wider. Just across the border in Aldershot, there's the Aldershot Urban Extension, four thousand five hundred homes. Which roads are they going to use? The ones through Farnham. Just down the road on the three-two-five, we have Borden, was going to be eight thousand, then it was four and a half, it'll probably end up somewhere around about six, six and a half thousand. All going on the same roads, not a single suggestion that any of these roads are going to alter anyway. So, you know, we, it is, it's not just somebody else's fault, we are contributing to this. And I do think when we're looking at planning applications, it has come up occasionally in planning applications, but I think, officers, that I, I really think that we should be putting in some comment on air pollution when we're doing work on with planning, because we are contributing to it, whether you like it or not. The more houses we put in that area, the more cars we put onto that air quality management area, the more we are adding to the pollution, and we can't avoid that.
I don't live in Farnham, but I can fully sympathise with all your frustrations about it, but I, all I can say is that I think the officers agree that we are doing the best that we can, but I think perhaps we might put a bit more pressure on Surrey County Council to do their bit, because I don't think they're pulling their weight. Thank you. Right, so if I now move on to, members are content to note the report, agreed. If I can now move on to item nine, the six-month progress report on the service plans, if I could ask Robin Taylor to introduce that report.
Thank you, chairman. This is the six-month progress report on twenty fifteen sixteen service plans for planning environmental services and community services. At annex one, which begins on page forty-seven, members will see that each of the objectives within those service plans has been given a red, an amber or a green rating. A red rating would mean that an objective is not on target. However, there are no objectives within this report with that rating, which is obviously good news. Amber means the target was initially off track, but is now back on track. Sixteen percent of the objectives within the report have that rating. Green means that the objective has already been achieved or is on target to be achieved within the period. Eighty-four percent of objectives, the vast majority, have that rating. I hope the report is self-explanatory. Thank you, chairman.
Any comments from members on the service plan? Podjeski.
Thank you, chairman. I'm not quite sure if this is the appropriate place to raise this, but one of the concerns that I have is that I feel when we're going forward and planning is such a big issue, and clearly there's targets to be met, and you're on target in several, in specific areas, and going back to what we were saying earlier.
Could you speak into your microphone?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, chairman.
Just change the direction of it, so it's near your mouth.
Yeah, coming from you, chairman. I think there's a way we can speed this process, I think there's a way we can speed this process up and make it easier for the executive to come to some of their decisions. One of the problems that I find we have is, and I don't know why it is, but I sometimes feel there's a lack of member input when it comes to say, for what we were talking about earlier, you know, we're not really briefed on a regular basis about the local plan and where it's going and what members are involved. And I'm just wondering, somewhere in all of this, to aid officers and the executive and speeding the whole process up, is there a way that local members can have a greater input so as we can push these elements through quicker and faster and work collectively together? I'm sure it's nothing more than a paperwork exercise that we're all busy people, but there must be a way of collectively working together to make sure these targets remain on target and that we can do whatever we can to get the right information, because I don't, I don't think we should undervalue the power and the importance of this overview and scrutiny committee. That is what we are there to do, it is to aid the executive in coming to their decisions and helping the officers. It shouldn't be the officers working in isolation, it should be a complete, and that's not to say you are, that is, it's just, you know, the members should have a greater input to make sure that we're all working together. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Jessi. Can I just ask, do you have any specific points you wish to raise on this service plan?
I was commenting specifically on the comments on page forty-seven with regards to planning permissions and updates to the planning policy, and I think it can all be worked around that. I mean, I would like to see somewhere that perhaps a sig is introduced, and especially when we're looking at neighbourhood plans developing as well, I think we're moving forward and it's a good thing, but I think we can move forward quicker if we work together and we are telling the executive what we, what they need to know, rather than sometimes members feeling a little isolated because we haven't got the briefings and the information that we, perhaps some of us, more than most, perhaps like. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Coburn's already mentioned neighbourhood plans, and we are bringing it to the next committee. We will then forward our observations to the executive. councillor Edwards.
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, my question's for Richard, actually, with regard to page fifty-six, CS stroke six, carry out grounds maintenance contract performance monitoring. Can I ask, our current contractors for all works regarding grass cutting and et cetera, et cetera, when is the contract up for negotiation there? Because I feel we're not getting best value in this particular instance. Shall I tell you why? I was doing some work for Wayhill and Bloom in the locality office in Hazemere, or the ex-locality office in Hazemere, and two contractors turn up. It's about, I don't know, about nine o'clock in the morning, and they got, they were in a van, a white van, with a thing on the back, you know, and they sat there, they went to get a paper, then they got a sandwich and a cup of coffee from Tesco's, and then they sat there, and they sat there, and people, residents going past and they were saying, oh, council's here again. Now, it's not the council. I said, look, they're contractors, and they may have been working early and they were having a break, but three-quarter of an hour, middle of the morning, you know, it sends the wrong message out, okay? And, you know, I'm just saying that really, I don't know whether the supervisors know what they're doing, but the whole thing just, you know, puts us, all of us, we're all a one team, in a bad light. That's all I'll say. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I know that the vice-chairman has comments on Glendale's contract, so perhaps we might ask your question, and then we can.
Well, I don't have anything really very much different from what councillor Edwards has just said, and actually, it will go on my list when I've done a little bit more research into it, perhaps for coming before this committee, the contract, as it were, because I think the contract could do with some examination. So that was really all I was going to say, something very similar to your story, I hear it all the time from my residents. But chairman, if I may, I think Damian wanted to comment on councillor Edwards' comment.
Yes, thank you. Two things. One is, it is Glendale, dealing with our grounds maintenance, the head of service responsible for that service is Kelvin Mills. It's really helpful in those circumstances that members come across any of our contractors not delivering effective customer service, not responding quickly, looking like they're not doing their job properly, to let us know as soon as possible. We manage our contracts very tightly. We hold the managers of those contracts strongly to account, and certainly over the last year with Glendale, because if you remember, a year ago, we had significant problems with verge cutting, and we've spent the last year working really hard with them to make sure they appoint the right staff, that they're properly supervised and properly performance managed, and the outcomes are achieved. But as with all contractors, you need to keep an eye on them, and you need to pick up very quickly on any examples where they are not absolutely on track. So please, if you do come across any examples that you have concerns about, let us know as soon as possible, and the team will take them up with the contractor straight away.
Right, councillor Els again.
Thank you, chairman. I'd just like to ask, if I may, of Richard, the Mills on Wheels, the review of the Mills on Wheels service consultations have begun. Could we?
This is, this is under community services, so it would be Kelvin Mills.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, but I can, I can pick that up, councillor Els.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to know, yeah, my question is, what sort of consultations, how's it been done?
Right, on the six-month progress report, are members content on the report? I can now move on to the performance management report, and I'd like to invite the chairman of the subcommittee, councillor Jim Edwards, if he would introduce the report, please.
Thank you, chair.
Thank you, chairman. Did everybody get this report, do you know? Yeah, you got it, okay. Okay. And all the comments are in there, if anybody has any queries for me, but performance generally, I thought was very good at the, at the sub-homes committee, and my comments were very few, and I recommend them to the, to committee.
Did you have any comments to make, councillor Edwards? They're all in the.
They're all in the document with the papers. Chairman.
Are members content to note the performance report? Right, I'll now move on to item eleven, which is the budget issues for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and if I can ask Mr Peter Vickers to report.
Thank you, Chairman. This report's the background for the four-year financial strategy and the approach taken to the 2016-17 budget. If members recall, they were invited to a finance seminar on the 5th of October, which set out the scene for the next four years. The message is that there is a projected shortfall over the next four years. Next year, looking at a million pounds worth of savings requirement, and that builds up to 3.3 million over the four-year term of our strategy. Measures are in place to address the challenge, and the document, the report goes through those. We've got Star Chamber process that's examining budgets in detail for next year, and also identifying potential savings that can go into a separate working group to look at developing proposals that will take more time. Detailed budgets will be put before this committee on the 19th of January, in line with the timetable in the report. So members, committees are asked to comment on what they have. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Vickers. Are there any questions you'd like to ask, Mr. Vickers, about the budget shortfall? No, councillor Els.
Thank you. On page 79, paragraph nine, Star Chamber process, and at the very end, what can we learn from other authorities? And I think it would be very interesting if we could explore community ONS processes, working with Surrey Police and local authorities to tackle antisocial behaviour and low-level crime. I think that Rye Gate and Banstead, and I think more recently Spellthorn, have adopted this collaborative approach. And I think that we would like to, or might, I would certainly like to, and I wonder whether this would be something that we could look at. It's a scheme that is a proposal that I would like to put to this committee, to develop a collaborative approach between Surrey Police and local authorities. It's in my, you know, within keeping in mind service efficiencies and seeing what we can learn from other authorities. So if we could look and perhaps have a report as to how the other authorities carry this collaborative approach out, it would be interesting. Is that clear? Have I made myself clear, or have I not? Sorry.
You have, councillor Els, and it's something that can be taken forward to the executive as a recommendation to be looked at.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Are there any other... Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Just going back to page 79 again. In the paragraph nine, in D, sorry, no, in E, what are your proposals for new or increased income, including from assets? Now, I did attend a corporate overview and scrutiny committee earlier in the year, and one of the issues on that meeting was the new business plan for sports grounds. And I did ask at that committee that any new proposal with regards to increased income from assets, particularly about sports ground, that they would become, would come before the corporate overview and scrutiny committee. Now, looking at this, am I right in thinking it's already been adopted by the executive, because it has changed? And did it go through overview and scrutiny committee? Please, thank you.
Councillor Edwards, what will happen is through the Star Chamber process, proposals will be put forward in terms of next year's budget and also over the next four years. And this committee will get an opportunity on the 19th of January to examine anything included in the budget going forward. And that's your opportunity to look at the detail within the budget at that point in time, prior to it being approved. So that way you can make recommendations to the executive around the budget.
Thank you. I think basically we, I think we will put proposals to the executive that when they consider their Star Chamber, we might look at coordinating with other councils and also increasing the income from our assets. So are there any other questions that you wish to raise on this item? Are we agreed that the notes should be forward to the executive? Right, finally, the review of the overview and scrutiny terms of reference and arrangements. As you know, we've had a couple of subcommittee meetings, to which councillor, my vice-chairman councillor Els was present, and I think she would now like to report on the outcomes of those subcommittee.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a very short report, actually. So to add what is reported in your agenda, the subcommittee met again last week, and we've agreed that we need to capture the views of all members about how they feel ONS is working at Waverley. And committee services will be circulating a survey to all members, which follows the evaluation framework developed by the Centre for Public Scrutiny. And the subcommittee is keen that you complete it honestly, based on your personal experience, however long that is. Your responses will be anonymous, but if you'd like to meet with the subcommittee to discuss this subject in more detail, there'd be an opportunity to do so. And the subcommittee members, I thank you in advance for your cooperation in completing the survey, because it is vital that we do get your feelings, your thoughts and feelings. And we look forward to receiving your input into this review. It's our intention to bring an interim report to the overview and scrutiny committees' January meetings. So when you get the surveys, if you will fill them in as quickly as you can and get them returned, that would really work well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Els. I should note that both the vice-chairman and myself are going to Rushmore Borough Council, I think, for the next couple of weeks, to see exactly how they operate and whether we can learn something from another borough. But meanwhile, are there any other comments you'd like to make to councillor Els? Now, in which case, that concludes the meeting for this evening. So thank you all very much for sitting for two and a half hours, and wish you a pleasant journey home.